All right, welcome everyone. I'd like to call the meeting into order, please, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone. Roll call, Mr. Lombard.
Ollie.
Yes.
Odie is absent. Clumper?
Yes.
Saxer?
Yes.
Telkot?
Yes.
With that, if there are no changes that need to be made to the agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written, please. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. No conflict of interest disclosure waiver requests tonight, which takes us to our approval of the minutes from the regular meetings on January 13th and 27th. If there are no additions or corrections, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. No community input that I have on the agenda tonight, so that takes us next to the financial items. Mr. Lombard.
Okay. Any questions from the board on the bills and claims? I had just a couple of them noted on page one. You'll see a big bill to Architecture Incorporated, $426,000. That's for the new elementary school, which is being bid out here next week. One other one, I think, noted. Just let me find it here. Feel free to check in if you had any specific questions. On page 11, Sioux Valley Energy electric bill, $88,000. I talked to the -- in a social setting, I talked to the Sioux Valley Energy people this past weekend, and they will be proposing a 5% increase to our utility rates, which doesn't sound like a lot, 5%, no big deal. We spend $1 million a year on electricity. 5% is a big deal, $50,000 plus. So, just FYI, thanks a lot. Said, "I'll tell that one teacher that we can't hire now, it's because of you guys." I get it, they haven't raised rates in two years, and, you know, they're just like everybody else, they have increased costs and stuff, so it's just a gut shot, like everything else. $820,000 of total bills. The advanced payments breakdown of $3,300 is listed. We had $58,216 of pay vouchers. Substitute teaching, majority of those. We have a lot of substitute teaching invoices coming through, $132,466 of food service invoices. That's all I had. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Lombard on the bills and claims? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So moved.
Second. There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Financial report, Mr. Lombard.
Okay. Continuing on the cash report for the month of January, $24.3 million coming into the month, $2.5 million of receipts, and just under $3.4 million of disbursements, left $23.5 million at the end of January. $4,954,000 was in the general fund, $1,025,000 in the capital fund, $556,000 in the special education fund, $53,705 in the pension fund, and $44,138 in the enterprise fund, $16.8 million in the capital projects fund. On the bottom portion of that cash report, you'll see a bank reconciliation. I have to apologize, the bank rec that I added in there was leftover from the previous month, so I just want to quickly run through the numbers. I know I'm boring incessantly when I do this, but it is a requirement that you guys review these numbers every month, so I just want to run through them. The balance per the bank for this month, these are, like I said, the identical numbers from last month, I just didn't update them. $6,379,575 deposits and transfer were $15,205, and the outstanding checks were $4,686. Adjusted bank balance, which you'll see matches up above there, $6,390,94.33. Also on the cash report, I periodically like to just kind of brief the board of where we were at the same time last year with our various cash balances. General fund is fairly similar, $4.9 million at this time this year, $4.7 million at the same time last year. Capital outlay is at $1,025,000 this year, it was at $154,000 last year. That's that program where we're building up to hopefully put addition onto the high school, so we're building up some funds there. Special education fund this year is at $556,000. Last year we were at zero. I think we were a little bit in the hole last year. Once again, we are starting to make a little bit of headway on that special education fund of building that fund balance back up a little bit each year, and that's showing in the cash balances there. Pension fund was the same, and enterprise fund was the same. Obviously, we have a whole bunch of money in the capital projects fund that we didn't have last year. The $2,563,000 of receipts are itemized. $17.1 million investment report is itemized, certificate deposit, and then the United States Treasury bills on the project. Payroll for the month of January is $1,928,000, and related tax deductions and insurance deductions are listed. The financial statements, first two pages of the revenue reports, the revenue reports are very consistent with previous year. I don't have anything noted there at this time. On the expenditure report, general fund continues to be run at that half a percent above where we were at the same time last year, as I've been telling you each and every month, which that's significant in the fact that we ended the year at 99.5 last year, so add a half to that, and you know what we get. Capital outlay fund, similar to last year, same time. Special ed report, very similar to last year, same time, too. So they're all running consistent. Food service department shows a net loss of $28,000 at 131. Capital projects financial statement, just the preliminary stages of that. And then lastly, the trust and agency report, $176,542. Any questions they would have on the reports?
Thank you. Hearing no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the financial report as it's been presented tonight.
So moved.
Second. There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Lombard. That takes us to our general business items. The first thing we have is administration reports from the administrative center, Superintendent Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief this evening. A few items to update you on, though. Legislative update currently in session. I would tell you that the large school group is working mostly on funding and then also doing some work with capital outlay. I would note that Mr. Lombard received recognition, Outstanding Business Official of the Year at our banquet, and then also in both the Senate and the House here last week on Tuesday. In addition to that, I believe he also got to visit the governor's office and snap a quick photo. I don't know if that ever got submitted to the journal or not, but it should have. So, anyway, congratulations to Mr. Lombard on that. Would also note that the Associated School Board's awards and legislative day is next week on Tuesday. I would note that President Ollie is being honored as the Outstanding School Board Member of the Year, so next week on Tuesday, we'll make that trip and continue our lobbying efforts in terms of funding, et cetera. I would note, there's a legislative coffee on the 22nd of February. Feel free to join us at Bethany Meadows. I believe that starts at 9:30, Paul? 9:30, yep, so there you have it. Retirement system, Board of Trustees position, there is a seat available, petitions are due on the 24th, if you're interested in that. Would like to note that the Associated School Board's executive board has a position open. Best of luck to member Ellie Saxer and her pursuit of that seat, as she has submitted the declaration of candidacy. So, best of luck moving forward through that process. Couple items on our Sparta Elementary construction timeline. As you guys know, we've worked through the construction planning process, and right now, we are set to open bids on February 20th. Would certainly invite our building and grounds representatives, Mr. Odie and Mr. Telkot, to that bid opening. That will happen on the 20th at the administration center, and then we'll spend Friday reviewing those bids, and then ultimately be bringing a bid to you, or we hope to be bringing a bid to you, a successful bid to you, at our 24th Board of Education meeting. Construction will begin this spring as allowed. It's important to note that the groundhog has said it's going to be in early spring, so we look forward to getting started on that construction project. We'll then commence a boundary line committee here in the fall, have construction all through the 2021 school year, and that our school will open in the fall of 2021. Kindergarten screen registration is open. Make certain if you know anyone who's got kindergarten-age eligible kiddos to contact our respective elementary schools. School board election, we have one seat open. It is a three-year term. The earliest date to circulate a petition is April 7th. The deadline for petitions is May 8th. In accordance to staff sheet, candidates must file a financial interest statement within 15 days of filing, and the election is set for June 16th. Contact the business office for any additional details. Staffing requests. Would note that our administration has submitted the five-year plans to the central office. We're in the process of compiling those. I believe we will present the five-year plans here at our second meeting in February. In addition to that, the administrative council and myself have had staffing discussions at our administrative council meetings, and I anticipate bringing a staffing recommendation to you at our February meeting as well, so we can get moving through that process, advertising, and filling those positions. Would note that we have confirmed some negotiation dates. On March 11th, the administration and the BVA will meet to do a couple of preliminary items, ground rules, sign-offs, some of those types of things, and then we will work through our negotiations process. We have a date set for the Personnel Welfare Committee and the administration, myself and Mr. Lombard, to sit down and meet. Then we'll meet with the entire board and executive session for negotiations preparations, and we will have our negotiations, our first meeting with the BVA on the 25th of March. We would tentatively plan to ratify the master contract on April 14th, and then work through our other wage and salary items. The budget process, it is ongoing, and we are in the middle of it. It's important to note that the legislative session and what comes out of that obviously has an impact on the budget process and negotiations and all of those things, but we can't wait until the legislature is done to get rolling for next year, so we're currently in the process of having our teachers complete general fund and capital outlay fund budget requests. Those go to the principals, and then from the principals, those flow to the central office. The biggest item I would note, in addition to the presentation of the five-year plan in late February, is the preliminary capital outlay budget will be presented in March and ultimately needs your approval, and that's so that we can spend, you know, a quarter of a million dollars on school buses and some of those large-type projects that require bidding, so they can be done in a timely manner. The middle school will be with us at our second meeting for good news, and then following them in March will be the intermediate school, and April it will be our elementary. Would note, for this school year, a couple academic calendar items. No school on the 14th, no school on the 17th, that is President's Day. Parent-teacher conferences held March 16th and 17th. Thursday, March 19th, school will be in session, and that will be the end of quarter three. That is our flood day, not a snow day, I would remind you, a flood day. And then Friday, March 20th, is no school comp day. And then it's relevant to note, we bumped our end date back for kids back from Thursday to Friday in May, and then our teachers will come back on Tuesday following the Memorial Day weekend, and that's due to our last lost snow day. And then any additional calendar changes that we have, we will work to communicate and move forward in a timely manner. So, with that, I would certainly entertain any questions you have.
Could you give an overview of the staffing plans for the Sparta Elementary and the timeline?
Sure, very good. Thank you, excellent question. I would note, I have shared the information with our teacher liaison council, as I've met with them over the course of this year. It hasn't been publicized from me, but I will note that this spring, later this spring, I'll bring forward a recommendation on the building principal, the administrator, to take over that building once it's complete, and then they'll have, they'll be involved in the planning and the construction process and some of those types of things, you know, those decisions that get made through the construction process. And then following that, I would say, in the winter, you know, probably when we come back in January of '21, we'll just seek volunteers, you know, of the elementary teaching staff, is anyone interested in a voluntary transfer to Sparta Elementary School, and then we'll just wait, we'll just announce that we're seeking volunteers, and then we'll just wait a little while, you know, a month or so, and then after we see who volunteers, then we may have to move into a mandatory transfer or an assignment-like situation administratively, where we assign individuals to that, and then ultimately, after that, we'll have that additional staffing request, just like we do this year, you know, late February for staffing needs and those types of things. And that'll basically get us staffed out for the opening of that school in the fall of 2021.
And would it be fair to note that all requests made are not automatically going to go to that school, and it is a contractual basis that assignments get to happen, correct?
Yes, absolutely. So I would say, first and foremost, you know, we work to honor requests. Obviously, they all don't get honored, but we work to honor requests when it's in the best interest of kids. The second item I would note is that as outlined in the negotiated agreement, teacher assignment is an administrative function, and ultimately, if you're certified to teach it, and we need you to teach it, and we direct you to teach it, you teach it. The only thing that really you're contractually guaranteed is your salary and your benefits. With that being said, again, we want to try and honor those voluntary transfer requests, et cetera, but we know it's in the best interest of kids. Obviously, when you're opening a new building, it's going to be really important that we have some strong BV teachers in those seats that can help those kiddos learn the links way and move forward. Yeah, great question.
Great, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Superintendent Larson. Mr. Lombard, anything additional tonight? Okay. High school, Mr. Schlockaway? Mr. Fracking, anything? Okay. Mr. Thorson?
I'll be here next week.
Okay. All right. Mrs. Nelson? Okay. Mr. Skibstead or Mr. Pearson? Okay. Mr. Bab, anything tonight? Ms. Foster? Okay.
Oh, all right. So I am just so, I don't know, excited and proud to share something with you, but I just couldn't wait, because we thought about waiting until the elementary presents in April, and maybe we'll still do that, but out of my 125 slides, I have 17 for you tonight, okay? Our new district STEM coordinator, Mrs. Kim Skibstead, she did a STEM project with all of our students out of Fred Assam, and they did some planning about Sparta Elementary. And so that was kind of cool. Every student so excited about this, to think that they were involved. This is a picture of kindergarten, and the kindergarten kids had to think of ideas and ways of how they could improve their playground. So they were with lots of little manipulatives, pipe cleaners, Play-Doh, you name it. They were designing some equipment that they would like to see in the new Sparta Elementary. And so then what Mrs. Skibstead did is she took pictures of the kids, and then she put a QR code with them, and so if you, I just learned this, but if you use your cellphone camera, and you can go to Cameron Hall, I learned something new here, then you could hear the kids talk about what they designed. This was very well received, I believe, and parents enjoyed that, and then there's just lots of pictures of all their creations below. First grade students, then, here's a picture of first grade, they had to design the area around Sparta Elementary. So they were apartment buildings, there's a good example of apartment buildings, houses, there's a McDonald's, and a flyboy, donuts, a park, and a pool down there located. Now, they built in hospitals and police stations, but as well, there will be a fire station very close. So that's in a few of the designs, too. But look at how they designed their roads and everything, isn't that just cool? They worked in groups, so they had to work and collaborate with each other and come up with their projects. So then second grade students, here's an example, and the teachers were taking some pictures out there, but they had to design the playground, but any additional equipment or area that they could incorporate into Sparta Elementary. Well, I tell you that the football field and scoreboard was in almost every project. So just plan on you're going to have a football field, probably a track, and of course, the scoreboard. So that was high on the list of priorities. But the conversations, if you could just be a nurse in a room and listen to the conversations, it was absolutely amazing. Every kid was so involved. Now, this is an example, third grade students, they designed the inside of a third grade classroom, so then again, after they got their projects created, the projects went home, but they took pictures of them, and then put the QR code on here again, and so then the students are all presenting about their third grade classroom, what they would include. And of course, they made areas for relaxation, there were some, let's have essential auras going on, and you know, and music was streamed in throughout, but you know, the projects were wonderful. And then our fourth grade students, oh, and here's Dr. Larson and Mr. Lombard. Mrs. Nelson is right on the corner of the screen, and Joe Meyer is over here to the left. Mrs. Skibstead was presenting. We had the administrators come out, and they got to listen to the fourth grade do their presentations. Now, our fourth grade students actually worked with two architects from Architecture, Inc. And I sat in on that presentation, and they showed them how you start with just the land, and here's the four walls, you know, the walls outside, and then they did, through all their computer software, they brought in the walls, and how you design from just the classrooms and everything going into what it looks like inside a classroom. And then, of course, they had the visual goggles that we got to put on, and we could see everything all around us. It was so fun. The kids were just intrigued. These kids learned how to draw and design a new ring for Sparta. Now, if there's no question, let me tell you, we have everything up to a million-plus dollars for a new ring, down to, I think, you know, one was like $56,000, so you know, it's interesting to see what they came up with. Dr. Larson had one group that he was listening to, and they had three different floor surfaces, and he coached those kids on why did you select those three surfaces, and they could tell him everything about the floor surface and why they would utilize that floor surface. So these kids, they learned everything about everything. They had their whole, you know, they had a rationale of why you would do it, they had their blueprints, they had the costs broken down per square foot. So all, just think of the standards that we're involved with going into a project like this. Now, if we could dream, okay, we'd have indoor recess rooms, we'd have relaxation rooms, there would be pools, and in one design, there's a pool for the older kids and a pool for the younger kids, and we would also have shopping, they have a link store in Sparta. The fourth grade students then presented all their projects to Superintendent Larson and Mr. Lombard and Director Nelson. It was just delightful, because all of them could answer questions. Now here, they even got to use a SketchUp. Mrs. Gallagher helped them in computer class, and they actually, a couple of the groups put SketchUp, used that, and this is one of the indoor recess projects that were on there. So PowerPoint presentations, it's just intriguing to me how they all pulled this together in such a short time, but just had so much fun. They would like to do that every day, so I wish we could be at that high functioning power every day with STEM projects. But I want to take this time to thank Mrs. Skibstead. She approached me and wanted to know if I would go along with this idea, and absolutely loved it. Classroom teachers were all engaged, Mrs. Gallagher helped in the classroom, it was wonderful. And thank you to our administrators that came out and listened to the presentations, but most of our thanks to the students for a job well done. I think we have some future scientists and architects out here. That's pretty cool. Any questions?
I have a quick question. I actually have two questions, just from looking at that slide. What's a nurse junior room?
Oh, this was really good. Paul, I think you liked that idea, didn't you?
Let me interject, since you brought up my name. This is all fun and games, and it's all dandy, but the only thing that came out of this, Lombard has to tell more people no. Now, now I'm telling fourth graders no, on top of principals and teachers. Now I got fourth graders to add to the list that I gotta tell them no. No, it was intriguing, in all seriousness, it was really good. A junior nurse room is when the regular nurse room gets a couple kids in there and it's filled up, and so they need, for those kids that aren't so sick, they need to have another room for them to hang out until the nurse can get to them.
Yes. And the music is in there, there's some relaxing chairs, and you know, probably some, I don't know, cooling pants.
I got that figured, I, it's just a partition, guys. I can do that.
With a massage therapist.
Yeah. At a lot less than their $100,000 cost, I think they had on it, or whatever.
I think that was something that was similar, I'm sorry, Dan, for interrupting, something that came across in every single plan, though, was like a stress-relieving room. It's like, does that tell you what our kids are experiencing right now with anxiety and all of that? But they all wanted some kind of room where they could, oh, if they got an 85% on their, you know, whatever test, then they could go to the stress-relieving room. So, it's awesome to see how minds work.
My other question, while I was just wondering, if you think any of the ideas that came out of that project would become a real idea in the plans?
Well, I think we pointed, you know, a few things out, like even if it's just putting a different partition in, for those kids that, I mean, you know, let's face it, if somebody's laying next to you and they're sick, and you're just laying there because, you know, my tummy kind of hurts a little bit, and if I lay here long enough, maybe, you know, somebody will forget I'm here, and just let me lay here for another hour, you know? You know, things like that, pretty cool. You know, we always talk about little different things, and even us, after this, the staff out there, we were talking about, well, how could we make it a little more intriguing for students? What could we add in here? They like this stress-relieving room. Well, why don't we get thinking outside the box, and maybe we can even create something at Fred Assam for them for that, and have that as like a reward or something going into it. So, it's still in its conversation.
I plan on pushing the teacher hot tub that the same group had in their plan, but in all seriousness, I would note that they talked a lot about indoor recess and indoor recess rooms. An item to note, in our new construction elementaries, our hallways, our corridors are much wider, and they're basically made wider for that very purpose, so you're able to utilize that space, that indoor space in inclement weather and those types of things. So, their observation of an indoor recess room actually has evolved in school construction to what it's currently now. Like, if you look at an older building, hallways are narrower, et cetera. Now you look at the hallways and/or the corridors, they're much larger for that very reason, so that's what I would tell them, why don't you have the indoor recess rooms? It was truly fascinating to see how well they did and the cost breakdown, so my understanding is the architects gave them a cost per unit or square foot, or so if they used tile, they knew how much, here we have 500 square feet of tile, this is how much it's going to cost. It was pretty incredible. The other item I would note is the architect- The other item I would note is the architects had told me that the SketchUp is used by college students. So I thought that was just really fascinating, that our fourth grade students were exposed to an application, a computer application that is currently used at the collegiate level. So absolutely incredible work by Mrs. Skibsted, Director of Instruction, and obviously everyone at Fred Assam. So great job.
Great. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you very much. Mr. Horst, anything tonight? No. Mrs. Palmer? All right. Mrs. Nelson, anything? Mr. Henshaw? Mr. Marso? All right, that takes us to general business. Item number one, under consent to approve submission of Kelly Lane Earth and Space Science Center grant for STEM Friday Program at Brandon Valley Intermediate School for the 2019-2020 school year. I entertain a motion to approve that as presented, please.
So moved.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Personnel, items number one through 11. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item 12 is for information only. Under Communications, Central Office, there were no building permits from January 2020. Under the Board of Education, there is a thank you there. And that takes us to board reports, formal board reports. Does anyone have one they would like to share tonight?
I'll just briefly share about the Curriculum Committee meeting we had earlier this evening. We had a guest visitor, Kim Skibsted. Big night for Kim Skibsted here. The Technology Integrations for the District, and she shared about her book study that she had going on this school year, which has now come to a conclusion, and some really good things came out of that book study. "STEM Infusing the Elementary Classroom" was the book used, and so she shared about that and kind of the format and the outcomes. And so just some really good momentum with the STEM mindset, so hopefully that can continue and spread. So that was the gist of that meeting.
Anyone else? All right, with that, it looks like that takes us to the end of our scheduled agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.